So, thank you for being here. While Kami's getting all her stuff set up, a couple of things. Did you all notice and receive the email that we didn't pass the moderate income housing? At first it came back with a glitch because one of our maps was not included. So Morgan included the map, sent that, and so that was, I think that was really good.
Did we ever review that plan? I mean, what is our modern income housing plan? And, I mean, like you just explained, it didn't pass first, but now it did, just because of a map.
Because of a map.
Were we ever, did we ever review that?
We did, at a, one of our city council meetings, we reviewed it, and there-
When was that?
Um, when was that due? I, I don't remember. Versus September? But the strategies we had were the same ones from last year. So that's, but I think for next year, we really should start on it sooner. Because one of the things you probably noticed in the report, they said two of our strategies are quite similar. And so we probably want to maybe look at that. So, you know, maybe not before now on Christmas, but maybe at the beginning of the year, we maybe should start looking at that. Because it kind of, what crept upon me, you probably were aware, but it crept upon me when it was due.
So if the strategies that we have aren't complete, I mean, we've started something, but, but it hasn't finished. Are they saying you have to come up with a new one, even though that one, say like there's a, I will say like are over fifty-five?
Fifty-five?
Or it's not totally built out? Does that, do we have to have a strategy to replace that when it's not done?
No, no, and they said we can just keep having the same ones. I, I think they, that note they had in our email was just that two of them kind of were the same, that we might want to. And I think what they really wants to do is just, do we have to just prove or have progress? And I think that's what we did. I think we could say, cause one of them was on ADUs, and there was a couple of new ADU things we had passed. So any of that, as long as it shows we're working on them, I don't think we have to always come up with new ones, from my understanding. So, and Madison, if you remember Madison was the one that came in, you know, she was the one that was kind of working on that. And she said after, there, there was just one, our zoning map she thought was on the same page as something, but it wasn't. And so when it was submitted, we were just, we're minus that one map. So, but yeah, I think come January, let's look at those, and so we can be working on them. So, well, okay, maybe we'll keep going for this minute till Ryan comes, cause he maybe had, he had some questions. I know you went and looked at KSOS. Bryce, thoughts on-
I, there's probably too much work, I don't think it'll qualify for, it's just-
Not this year, anyway.
Not this year.
That, that's what Jared had said, he thought it was too much.
It wa, actually putting a definition up on what we want to do with it, that would be kind of hard right now. But there's a lot of work to be done.
Maybe do it in phases, start next year or something?
Yeah, the roof is leaking, there's three different spots. I have one question, when we went in there last time, I took some pictures, and there was a ton of records in there. And now there's only like three boxes.
Like, they've taken vinyl records?
Yeah, like there was a bunch of them, so. In fact, Jared, we kind of made a joke, cause Jared popped one off, and I think Brian Googled it, and like, oh, this is worth fifty bucks on eBay or whatever, so.
What room were the records in?
They were in various rooms.
Oh.
Now they're all kind of in a pile, there's, I think there was three small boxes. And I'm like, that's too bad, so I don't know if someone broke in there and took them or what, but anyway. If you hear anything.
Okay, I can ask, I can ask Jared if anybody knows. I didn't, I didn't know, I didn't know we had records.
Yeah, there was quite a few.
Yeah.
You saw, did you see them? Yeah, there, there was a lot.
Yeah, there were.
They were all in the small office rooms.
Yeah, the, the ride is-
They weren't in the big room, where they are now.
Maybe you could just ask the public works guys, just, you know?
Yeah.
Or something.
Yeah. Okay. Um, we've ordered the plaque, so Jared found that, you know, you, you had mentioned Dell, that Jared had actually drawn one up, that he said he had it approved. So, I, that is ordered, and I think it should be done even maybe by tomorrow. This was, this is what Jared gave me, that he said that Bruce had, had approved this, the plaque for the organ. So I just sent that to Crown Trophy, but these are just mine also, cause I had to, I took a picture of it, and I had to tell him the dimensions. And then he asked me wh- what we wanted, and he gave me, and he, the Crown Trophy, I told him the color of the organ. He recommended gold to black, which I really don't even know a hundred percent what that means. But I thought, well, if you do this all the time, and you think that'll look good on a brown organ, I think I'm fine with that. So, and I think it might even be back as far as tomorrow, to even maybe have approved, it'll be done, and then we'll just have someone mount that on. I don't, I don't know.
That'll look nice.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that'll be good. And then one other thing, just to remind you, we, the Seffix pledge is set by next meeting. We, so we don't need to today, he just said by next meeting, if we have a chance to go through that. So, okay, so we're happy to have Kami here with us. So she's going to, we thought we'd, you know, maybe use a little bit of time, if you have any questions, as far as on the financials or anything, before we talk.
Do you want me to kind of go through them, or what would you prefer? Or do you want to ask me your questions?
Do we have our copy? Do we need our copy? Do we have our copies?
You want to just make a copy of mine real quick, Molly? Is that Hooper? Okay.
Maybe while she goes through that, then I'll give you a couple of more announcements. We still are in the need of a crossing guard. We don't have one. So currently, West Haven City, Hooper City employees are sharing the duty of being the crossing guard. West Haven did it this week, Hooper City's doing it next week. West Haven's advertising, putting a lot of signs around, I'll announce it again. I've had a couple of people contact me saying, oh, we might be interested, but then they never went and applied. So, if you know of anyone-
What employees, is that like public works employees, or office employees?
So Jared has signed Benson to do that, Benson Mudrow. So he went and trained, was trained today, I believe, with West Haven. And so then he's going to be doing that for us next week. So, like I say, if anybody knows of anybody, that's, that's something that we need to work on.
Now, is it gonna be, are they gonna share, are we gonna share it with West Haven, like do it once a week, or every other week?
Every other week until we get someone actually hired.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so we'll do it next week, first week of December will be West Haven, then it'll be us again. So we hope that we really can get someone, someone hired. So we don't have to do that. And then just another note I had to, LPC, I don't know if you've been noticing, but we've been having monthly meetings with the LPC. So I didn't know if you and Dell are still interested in doing that, anybody else?
Yeah, I just haven't been able to catch, catch them, so.
That's, that's okay.
Yeah.
So, there's, um, starting January is when, you know, once the legislative session starts, they'll be every week.
Yeah.
So just be thinking about it, and then we can talk about that again if you want to still. We just have to have those three voting mem, we can have up to three voting members.
Okay.
So.
All right, yeah. I've had trouble getting my email, when I open it, it goes, I get this encryption.
Oh no.
And so, um, sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes it, it goes through, but then I'll open an email and it'll be encrypted, so. Yeah, it's kind of ghostly.
It's frustrating.
Yes.
Okay, is everyone right now, we'll start to talk then about this.
Um, okay, I'll just go through it then, I guess, and if you have questions, stop me, or we can talk about anything. I'm, of course, always open, you guys are welcome to call me, I know I've talked to several of you, Dell, I talk to you once a while. You know, and same with Debbie and stuff, so I'm happy to talk about anything. Um, and go over things and help you understand, so feel free to reach out to me. I did bring some business cards, if you want my business card, I can handle one, but. Um, anyways, overall, um, there's a couple of things that I just was kind of excited to go through. Um, first off, we did break out those enterprise funds. So we now have a sewer fund, we have a garbage fund, and we have a storm water fund. So, that's kind of nice, so we can actually see where things are at with the entity, and how each kind of section is funding itself, or, or lack of funding for itself, to, um, help us cover the expenses and the revenues for those utilities. Um, I personally really like to break those out, because it does give us a better idea where we're at with our fees, and what fees are maybe covering, or what fee, where our fees are at, on a regular basis. So that's just one thing I wanted to just kind of point out, um, that we haven't done.
Just tell us that one more time, on garbage, sewer, storm water?
So it's gonna be garbage, sewer, and storm drain, or storm water, yeah, sorry. I say storm drain, cause I'm used to storm drain, and I've been corrected by Jared, storm water. There's a difference. Anyways, but yeah, so you'll see those in the financials now, that you now have a Fund Twenty, Twenty-two, and Twenty-three. And those are those funds broken into different categories. So if you look back on the, um, printed financial pages, uh, you'll see like from page eleven and twelve are your sewer. Uh, pages thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen are your garbage. And then pages sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen are now your storm water. So, that way we can monitor closer. I think it's a lot easier to, you know, try and see where the, where the money's at with those fees. Um, because the idea is that, you know, garbage is supposed to pay for itself, sewer's supposed to pay for itself, um, storm water's supposed to pay for itself, that type of thing. So it kind of gives us a better idea as to where we're at on those fees, and what we've got to afford to do things with. Um, so I'll just kind of go over the general fund, again, stop me if you have questions, or you want to discuss anything. Um, and we'll just go like that. Um, so right now, overall, with our revenues, we're about twenty-three point nine percent, um, of revenues, and we're thirty-four percent of the year. Um, a lot of that is because we have not collected our property taxes yet. That typically comes in one big chunk, and that's more in, um, a couple of months that we'll see that property tax come in. So, that, some of it is because of timing of those particular things coming in. So that's on page three, sorry. Page three is the revenues. Yes, correct, stop me Dell, if I forget, please. So actually go back a few more pages, it's the one that is like kind of the smaller printing. Sorry, it's the Cassell financials. I'm kind of using both sets to kind of go through it, but-
Okay.
My summary kind of explains what these are in the back. So, um, I try and point out some key things, but, uh, so yeah, you'll see that, you know, our property taxes, we've only collected two point eight. Well, that's because we get a big chunk in throughout, uh, um, I believe it's November that we actually get it, isn't it? But we'll get a one big chunk, so that's why that's kind of a little bit lower. Plus Class C roads fund, uh, that has not come in at all yet. I suspect that will come in this next month. So, um, that's kind of those, some of those things that they come in periodically, not all the time every month. So that's why we're a bit, little bit lower. Overall, licenses, we're sitting pretty good. Um, taxes, again, were low because of those things. Um, intergovernmental, we're a little, nothing, because they haven't been submitted from the state yet. Um, charges for services were about twenty percent. Um, fines were about thirty-eight percent. And then if you go to page four, um, our miscellaneous were about forty-four percent. And then this unknown, I did find out what that was, and that was a grant, but it was after I'd already printed these. So I'll re-categorize that to that grant, but that's what that is, so. So that's on the revenue side. Um, the expenses, um, pretty much everything's within budget, except for a few categories. Um, you know, the categories that are kind of over their thirty-four percent is, um, going to be your recreation, and also your parks is at thirty-three point four, so they're really close. Everything else is sticking under budget. Um, the recreation is due to Tomato Days, which, um, as you probably noticed in my summary there, I kind of broke out Tomato Days and gave a brief, um, explanation as to why it was more expensive this year than previous years.
Can I ask you something?
Uh-huh.
On miscellaneous on page four?
Yes.
What's the other?
Um, that other, on that, I believe, and I can print off the detail, I was hoping to have my computer up and do it, but it won't connect to the other computer. So I believe that's just like some, um, various fees that we may be collecting. I can print that off and get a better detail for you on that.
Okay.
So, and I'm happy to do that, by all means, so. Um, I will pull that up. Like I said, I was hoping that I would have that up, but won't connect to the other room, so. Anyways, but, um, so yeah, the Tomato Days, uh, we didn't bring, we brought in less revenue than the previous year. Some of that is because in the past, we've had twenty-two thousand in ramp grant, we did not, um, receive that. Um, but we did receive, so that went down, but we only went down a total of eighteen thousand five hundred. So we did receive some additional funds from contributors, but we just didn't get that ramp grant, and that really killed on what we expected the revenue to be. Plus, the expenses did go up. Your, um, your candy usually is donated, we did not get that donated, that was eleven hundred dollars. Uh, there was, the performances increased by twenty-four hundred, the belt bucklers increased by twelve hundred. Uh, there was a new roping event that we did, which was three thousand. The cost of the tent rentals was twenty-two hundred, uh, additional cost on the fireworks was thirty-three hundred, uh, and then some additional entertainment for twelve hundred. So, things unfortunately have gone up. I think it's, you know, definitely something we need to narrow in on, and decide how the council wants to address it in the future. I think it's definitely something that, you know, needs to be addressed with the budget.
So not getting that ramp grant hurt pretty bad.
Oh yeah, that really hurt, but also the cost of everything going up. I mean, that was a pretty big jump in all the costs, when you add all those up, and, you know, it's just everything nickel and dime a little bit more, and it, it does kill, and unfortunately, that's the economy we're in.
And I think we talked about writing possibly three grants, maybe to go along with Tomato Days. You know, tried to write one for the rodeo, I think we approved. We wrote for entertainment, even as one for arts program, so hopefully that'll help. It, it really does hurt when we don't get those.
Yeah, so, and I mean, that's, I think even, you know, as we start doing the budget process, I was mentioning that maybe we need to have Erin, you know, put together a budget for each event that we're going to offer within Tomato Days, and then we decide what events we really want to fund within the city. You know, if, if we need to reconsider some of those events. Or if they're all so valuable, great, then let's fund it. But you as a council need to approve that and say, you know, these are the things we're going to offer, because it is a great community event, and everybody would, I think, would be just irate if we didn't have it, of course. So it's not that, but it's necessarily that we go through and we say, okay, you know, these are the parts of it that maybe we want to do, or are we willing to spend that money on that? That's fine, that's your decision, not ours. So, that's something we need to definitely go through more in detail with the budget.
So, help me understand, because I'm a little confused. So, it says on the, on the calendar year totals, that we overspent by thirty thousand dollars. But then it says for the fiscal year, that we brought in nine thousand dollars. Is that what that means?
Well, that was for twenty twenty-four. So, because of the timing of Tomato Days and the end of our-
Budget.
Budget and our financials, we end June thirtieth, and then our timing, it makes it really hard to kind of see how twenty-four did compared to twenty-five by looking at the financials. So that's when I, we came up with this calendar totals.
Okay.
So if you look at more so the calendar total, in twenty twenty-four, um, we actually lost thirty thousand. But we're in fiscal year twenty-five, well, those financials are gonna tell you a different story. But it's because of the timing, you know, some donations come in before June thirtieth, some go in, you know, after that. And so, really to try and say, was this particular event successful? And was it where we want it to be? We kind of said, okay, let's back it up, and let's look at it on a calendar year for this event, and see where we want to be, you know? Um, we did receive a few more sponsors, but do we need to get more? Maybe that's an op, an answer. Like Sherry said, maybe some grants, I know there's grants out there. Maybe some more donations from, you know, local businesses, I don't know. It's hard, because everybody, you know, you go ask for money, that's a hard thing. I, I, hats off to anybody that can do fundraising, cause I'm not gonna. But you can kind of, this gives you an idea, and I think if we can come up with that budget from Erin saying, this is what this particular event would, or part of the event costs. And keep in mind, all those expenses may not be in yet. We still have a few more trickling in, you know, maybe credit cards, or, you know, bills that are just coming in, that we'll see next month. So this is not the final say on Tomato Days, I would say.
Yeah, it's kind of-
But it's ouch.
It's kind of, um, hard to, to get hit with that, like now, you know, I mean.
Definitely.
I, uh, I, I mean, I think Tomato Days is great and everything, but that's a huge chunk of money.
Definitely, absolutely.
I think the idea of having things prioritized, you know, those things that we, people would really plan on, and then scale it back from there, so that if, rather than spend money that we don't have, we may have to not have a certain activity.
Absolutely, and that's the decisions that, you know, and I'm not saying that if, if you don't, you know, you as a council, there's value in this community event, maybe you only do this community event. Maybe we don't do the Easter Aka, or we don't do, you know, a different community event. Or, but that's you guys' decision, and that's part of the budget process.
Right.
That we definitely need to communicate, and, um, start getting those ideas and numbers in, saying, okay, and then we sit down, and, you know, I, as part of the budget, I sit down, and I'm like, okay, well, this is what I think we need to operate, just our office supplies, our, you know, maybe computers, our personnel and stuff. But then, like, these are the things that you guys get to make those decisions on, and then you guide me, you know, and tell me what, what's important to you, because really, it's your budget, not mine.
So where, where does this money come from?
Um, it comes from the fund balance, or as far as going that negative thirty, well, we either have to see if we bring in additional money, or we use fund balance. We will probably have to amend the budget, um, to, you know, account for that. I fully anticipate that will be a budget amendment, the Tomato Days this time. And then we'll have to definitely put our thumb down on it and say, okay, where, where are we doing? If we get a grant, then we do this, or maybe the person that does an event, if they still think that event is valuable, maybe they need to go get some funding. I don't know what the answer is, but that's where you guys get to step in and have your thoughts, and definitely voice your opinions on that. So, I very much value the council's input when I'm putting together a budget. I mean, and same with staff, I mean, I'll meet with staff several times before I bring a budget, and then the budget is a preliminary budget for us to discuss, not, it's not solid until we're done. You know? So, um, so yeah, definitely that Tomato Days, it's got some concern as to where we're gonna go with it. And it is frustrating, cause this next year is our hundred year, so I know everybody's all stoked about it, but on the same token, what do, what's the council's priorities? And that's, that's your decisions, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, you betcha. So, um, any other questions you have on expenses or anything that I can address, or?
Which, which page are you on?
Um, I'm just on any of the pages, kind of in the back, or wherever you want me to jump with. I was looking at general funds, so.
Okay, general.
Yeah, but if-
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay, absolutely.
So general engineering?
What page are you on?
Page five.
Okay, yeah, or account number. Great, yeah.
So, is that the total amount that we spent on engineering in this quarter? Or this, this four months? Does it show up anywhere else? I couldn't see it, so.
Which account number, am I missing it?
Ten forty-one fifty fifty.
That's year to date.
Yeah, that's- Okay, yeah, that's, year to date is fifteen thousand. No, no, um, I'm wondering if when Morgan pays the bill, I mean, most of that would probably be for that. Oh, you know what, there, oh, none of it's allocated to sewer. Let me look and see if some of that needs to go to sewer. Cause I'm betting it does, thank you.
Our, our engineer left.
Yeah.
And he was not replaced.
Yeah.
So who and what is taking care of that? Is J U B, um, you know, how much is going to them now? Um, where's it show up on the, on the budget? Cause fifteen thousand year to date, that doesn't seem like very much.
Yeah, and-
For four months.
Yeah, and it could be that they've only billed us for maybe like three months worth of their stuff. Um, you know, that, that could possibly be part of it. I'd have to look at all those invoices. Um, I don't pay the bills, so I don't look at each one as far as that, but I do look at them when I sign them. But I can look into that detail, and definitely-
Okay, so to make sure I understand too, so year to date, that fifteen thousand is all we've spent in the last four months?
On engineering, yes.
One thing I can, I can tell you Bryce, with Malcolm and Jared, they're really reviewing a lot of the things. Taylor still comes and meets, and I know with this new subdivision ordinance, he will be part of, they were, there's going to be this new group that will be, and it's going to be like a planning commission person. And, um, Taylor and Jared and Malcolm, um, if, if ever we needed, like, our attorney. So I think they've been trying to do most of what they can between Malcolm and Jared, but then Taylor is here to consult, and he usually comes to a staff meeting, maybe every other week, so.
I am looking at, there also wasn't any allocated to just streets, so I'm gonna relook at, at all the invoices, and see if they need reconsidered on the coding, so. Cause, you know, I'm sure some of their fees have been relating to those as well, so thank you for bringing that up.
No, I'm just going down.
Yeah, no, you're good.
I'm just looking at like ones that are way out of whack, like, uh, the next one down, computer replacement, two hundred and forty-eight percent of the budget.
So that one-
Is that, is that something we got bids on, or, you know, cause it's, we budgeted twenty-five hundred, it's over the amount?
So let me kind of explain a couple of things first off. Is first off, when the, um, state looks at the budgets, they look at these bottom lines, so overall. So you are allowed to basically rob Peter to pay Paul, basically, in this scenario. So I think what the thought was here is we needed some computer replacement. Yeah, twenty-five was budgeted, but those computers were pretty bad. Well, staff said, we would rather not spend the money on small equipment, we'll instead have newer computers. And state kind of allows, that's where you're allowed to do that as a department head. And I encourage cities to more so with your departments, and I mean, it's up to you. But you, like, if I have a public works guy, and he needs something, something's broke, I'm not gonna say, I'm gonna micromanage you to say, you can't buy it because there's not enough in this line item. I'm gonna trust that he's gonna make the best judgment, cause I don't know his department, I don't know public works, I don't know what they need. He knows. So if he feels like this item is more important than this item, he can do that, as long as he's, he stays within the total budget. And that's what the state kind of looks at, is they say, the budget is there for a guideline, and a budget should change throughout the year, but the budget is there for a guideline, and as long as you stay within kind of your department, you can shift money. And so, you know, I mean, if, if you want, we can reclassify some of that expense down to the, you know, small equipment. What defines small equipment, maybe some of that computers is, you know?
I'm not concerned about that, I'm just concerned about the process.
Oh, okay.
Cause I know we have, I think the state has different guidelines, but we have ordinances as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're required to get three bids. So, and I know there's, um, you know, there's, there's some, uh, things that we should do, as our ordinances have stated, so. Anyway, that's why I was curious.
Absolutely, yeah.
So two hundred and forty-eight percent was, was way out of whack, so.
But like I said, maybe staff decided, but that, like you're saying, there's your ordinances, um, and I don't.
So should there have been three bids?
Um, on that particular thing, it depends how your ordinance is written. I haven't read the ordinance. Some of them say if it's per item, then it's not a problem. But some of them say that if it's overall project and if it's overall project, possibly, I don't know. I haven't read the ordinance, so I'm not gonna specify that, um, you know, on that particular thing. But yeah, I mean.
Well, you explained it well, so.
Okay, sorry. If I get too much into the weeds, tell me and say, whoa, come back.
Yeah, I don't speak in doubt.
That's okay.
Just add it, maybe someone else, but the other one is supplies. It looked like on all the categories, supplies, maintenance, tools, they were all, some of them were. Yeah, way over a hundred percent and then a lot of them were, were fairly high as well. I'm just kinda curious why. Maybe it's what you just explained or, or something being categorized in supplies that maybe really isn't.
Would, and I'm happy to do this, but would it help if you guys, I mean, there's a couple of ways that, um, we can approach it. That I can give you either the details, the general ledger, which I'll warn you, it's like IRS code. Or we could give you even a listing of all the checks that are written every month if you guys would like to. We could provide that as part of the email when we send the financials. I'm happy to do that, if you would like that.
That'd be a big email, right?
You'd like that?
No, that would be a big email. I'm not sure I would. I think if there was, if there was just some, some, uh. Line items that we had questioned about, maybe that, but I don't want the first.
Yeah, and maybe when you have questions, you could email me back and say, hey, can I find out the information? I'm happy to pull up that detail and say, okay, here's the information on that line item. I'm thrilled to do that, absolutely thrilled. Yeah, definitely.
Around page six now?
Yep, we can look at page six, okay.
Okay, so on the emergency management fund. So I looked at the utility fund and it's, it's kinda right on schedule, we thought. You know, for, for, um, three mon- or four months, it was a hundred and sixty-five. So if you take that out to a, a full year, it's four hundred and ninety-five thousand. It's the city council, we, um, voted to put five percent of that away in an emergency fund, so.
Okay, so you're talking within the general fund or within like the sewer? Oh, okay, just public safety, okay.
Page six. So basically that's a fund for emergencies.
Okay.
Number one, just to prove the FEMA if we ever have an issue that, hey, we're trying our best. You know, we don't have a lot of money, but we're trying to do something, um.
So it, it is an ordinance that.
Well, we all voted on it. It's not an ordinance, but we all voted on it.
Went back to look, cause you brought that up last time. So on February first, Bryce, in a discussion, you said. We would like to see a percentage of the utility tax be put towards the emergency preparedness fund. Then I went through every minute after that and I could not find anywhere that it had ever been motioned. And so I don't, I don't believe, cause I haven't seen it, when Teresa did the budget, that she put that in there. I did see this nine thousand in emergency preparedness fund.
That was it, cause we, before she left, that was, that's actually the fund.
Is that nine thousand?
That is it.
That's that nine thousand two, okay. Cause I thought that was like for you to put on like emergency share or something like that, so that, okay.
No, this is, this is.
Do we need to make a motion?
So.
Yeah, we couldn't tonight, but we could do that in another meeting. So I actually printed it off, the February first, and that's what it said. Member Wilcox would like to see a percentage of the utility tax be put towards the emergency preparedness.
Was that our staff meeting or actual meeting?
It was our actual meeting. These are the minutes from our February first meeting. And so I couldn't find where we'd ever voted on that and so Teresa maybe wasn't aware and didn't put it in it. And so, and I, I actually called and talked to this Lisa Gosling, who she said she knows you really well. She really said really nice things about you. And she said that FEMA will pay up to seventy-five percent of a city loss as long as everything is documented correctly. And we're responsible for twenty-five percent, but that's only city near, I'm not telling you anything near because you already know this. But in-kind and volunteer hours will count. This is what she said though. What we need to do is make sure we have an ordinance or a code that we can release funds in a timely manner. That's the words I wrote down what she said. She said, do we have like a credit card that has enough limit? The biggest problem cities run into is while we're waiting for FEMA to reimburse us that seventy-five percent. Do we have a code or ordinance to release funds in a timely manner? And she said, and the next thing she recommends is we need to make sure we have enough insurance. You know, this isn't going to cover people's private property. The government will give them like low interest loans. But this is like our city and she said, one really good thing about Hooper is we don't have a, we don't have a lot of city properties. That would actually probably even, you know, caught, like, count as that. Yeah, qualify, I think, I can't think of the word. So I think that's one thing, so if you, we want to do that, then we certainly can have that on the agenda and make a motion to do the five percent. And I asked her, I said, do other cities? And she said, no. She said, even the county doesn't have money set aside. Because she said, we wish we all had enough money that we could, but we don't. So she said, more importantly, is just make sure that our insurance, we have enough insurance and we have that ordinance. That we can quickly release funds, which I don't know exactly how we do that, Kami.
So I've been through one.
In order for FEMA to kick in, we had to.
Yeah, you have to pony up.
Yeah, you have to pony up. So I've been through a FEMA, I've been through one with Kaseville when I worked there. Um, and it was a big one because we have, we had our own power department. And so we're talking millions and millions and millions of dollars because of what it was. It was a windstorm. So when we went through that, yes, we had to pay the expenses because it's several, you know, months before you get the FEMA funds. And then some of the funds are held until a later time and then released even like, I think it's like a year later. It's like a fair amount later. So you do have to have the cash flow, I think is more so what, an appropriate thing, is to say more so the cash flow. So I think that is more what we look at, but on the same token, um, it's not, I don't think it's a bad idea to, you know, consider restricting some. If you as a council, you know, feel that's appropriate, I would maybe say, like you're saying, five percent a year up until this X amount, you know? So that you don't get an excessive balance in there, because that is going to be restricted money for that unless a future council unrestricted it.
Yeah, I think when we, when we discussed it, it's, it's a fairly liberal fund. It's not just for FEMA. But say like, uh, you know, a, a stormwater thing goes down. Um, we can actually use, you know, use that if there was not funding anywhere.
Like a loan.
And I know there's other things that the county's pushing us, the city to have as far as supplies, you know, um.
And that's what I thought that budget item was, more supplies or a fair or something like that. So that's why I didn't.
So there's some things that we need to be proactive on that's gonna require a little bit of money.
Okay.
But that, that was new money, you know, the tax.
Yeah.
So it's like, why not save it? Why not get in the habit of saving that?
Not a bad idea, yeah.
Until such a point that the, the council decides not to. But anyway, that was my concern, so I guess we need to put it on the next, next council's agenda. And then vote on it in motion, we can do that, so.
And as soon as it's done, I can go ahead and start, you know, saving that five percent away. Yeah, that's not a problem.
And I like how you said with the emergency management, so it could be used for other things.
Yeah, I like that.
So like you say, if we have the road that collapses down by the cemetery and that's an emergency to get it fixed, we could maybe use that money, yeah.
Cause FEMA, you have to hit a million, I think it's a million is the threshold.
Yeah.
But if it's a, a county within the county.
Then the county looks at it together.
So we'd be included with their.
The other cool thing with FEMA and Sherry kinda touched on it is if you do keep track of your community hours and your community equipment. So we, in Kaseville, we didn't know that, so I went back and I had to go to all the stakes. That was the best way I could think of. And have the state president send out a paper, everybody put down your name and the amount of hours of what equipment you used, best we can. And we ended up getting full reimbursement for that because of all the community hours. So it was really beneficial.
Working on that, so he's.
Beautiful.
He's, he's, uh, hitting that pretty hard.
Awesome.
And we might wanna look at our insurance coverages too and just make sure, I don't know how often we do that. But that's something we might wanna look at and make sure our buildings, we think, are covered for what we, they should be, so.
The league should, with the league, they're pretty good about looking at that on a yearly basis. But definitely when you sit down and review your policy, you should question them and say, did you increase this? Because that's worth more now you realize to replace it, you know? We want replacement value, not historical value, maybe. You know, so yeah, definitely push your insurance a little bit more and ask questions, so. Okay.
Morgan, did you write that down to be on the agenda next time? Okay, good, thank you.
Okay. And I would maybe, as part of that, specify what things it can be used for or how it can be used. Maybe if it's an emergency, maybe, you know, just, uh, it has to be approval by the council, even by email or something. You know, I don't know what, I'm not the attorney, so whatever is legally allowed, but something that, you know, stipulates that. So it's not just someone's judgment call, you know, more specified. But I think that's a great idea, yeah, so. Any other questions on the general fund or anything? Or if you have questions on what's in a certain category, you can email me and I'll print, I'll give you that detail, absolutely. Love to, so.
I have a question on storm water.
Okay, yeah.
It's on page seven. We have a line item on highways and for storm drain, it's a clean. Uh, year to date actually spent forty-five hundred dollars. But our actual storm water fund, seems like every year we spend very little money or storm water fund. We've put in a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I'm just trying to, I don't know, trying to. Think what we're gonna spend this money on.
Yeah.
Tell, tell me where that is again, Ryan, it's on page seven and what?
Page seven, uh, ten point four, there's fifty-seven hundred, it's storm drain, it's cleaning. So my thought is to take, to take that out of highways and put it in, uh, storm water fund. Try to spend, spend some of this money that we're, we're rapping for whatever reason.
I'll, I'll ask Jared what that is, because it should be coming out of storm water, if it's storm water. Now, she, he has expressed to me and I don't, again, I'm not public works, so I don't know. But he expresses to me that storm water is very different than storm drain. Now, I should know this, my husband's a SWIP guy, but I don't, so. I, that is a very good question. We can definitely ask him and find out the answer, because I don't know.
What are we gonna spend a hundred and seventy thousand dollars on for storm water? Wh- what do we spend that money on?
Well, I know there is something coming up. I heard that's a contract that.
They'll talk about that tonight.
So, so where's that, where you're finding that one hundred and seventy thousand?
Cause we're on page eighteen.
So eighteen shows its own storm drain or storm water. Sorry, slap me. Jared's gonna shoot me.
I know what, what you're talking about. It's pretty matter, what you're talking about. So we can use that money for that?
I, I would think so.
I think it qualifies, I very much think so. The other thing is, is I did, just before I came, I ran a little analysis. Cause I was thinking about, you know, okay, where we divided these out into different funds. You know, everything's been housed in that sewer fund, but have the other funds been supporting it? And I think we all know the answer is yes. The other funds have been supporting the sewer fund. So I kinda went back five years. And I looked at the storm water fund and overall, in the last five years. I determined, and Ryan went through this with me, just I had a second set of eyes. But we determined there was about seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars worth of money. That needs to be taken from the sewer into the storm drain, into the storm water. Get that out of my head. Anyways, so the storm water fund is a little bit healthier than what we, you know, anticipate. But this, it's sewer fund in return is not as healthy as we thought it was, you know? So that is one thing, um, garbage though we looked at and it's, it's pretty much where it needs to be, you know? So it's, we all acc- counted about a hundred and forty thousand, which is about where it needs to be, you know, that's, that's good.
That's what we've known all along.
Yeah, exactly.
That's the case, but all three funds can support each other, though, because they're all utility funds, correct?
Well, they can, but you don't want to. It's not good management.
Necessary, they can't.
If necessary, they can borrow loans from each other. They can't pay for each other, but they can loan each other money. So you've basically been loaning money from your storm water department to fund more of your, um.
Sewer.
Sewer fund. So, yeah, your sewer fund's basically been taking a loan from storm water. So the idea is each enterprise item should pay for itself with the fees that are being charged.
Wish to present my next question. The ARPA money that we need to decide how to spend for the next thirty days. Can that just be allocated with sewer fund? Can we just say that?
So that's the thing, is I did, um, find out even with the general fund and you just need to basically say in a public meeting. That, and we could even do it when I talk about the financials, which I'll make it really brief, cause we've hashed over it here. But, um, anyways, you could simply say the unspent ARPA money, the one sixty-five in the general fund. You could say that you wanted to use that for police and just give me that direction, we're done. So, and we've spent that and that's what I would recommend. That definitely qualifies, hands down, no question. That we just don't have that restricted. Doesn't mean we have any extra money coming in, it just is a simple thing we have to. You have to tell me, I can't just do it, you know what I mean?
Well, that was one time money, so.
Yeah.
But we don't wanna lose it.
No.
No, we have to, we have to use it by the end of the year.
Yeah, and then.
So you said police, why would you say police?
Well, that's because that's in the general fund. Police services, a lot of cities, a lot of places use that. Because police services went up during our, uh, during COVID. It definitely qualifies, no question.
We can still pull and use it for fifty-nine hundred west project.
The cash is still there. Yeah, the cash is still there. Um, and then on the, you were more so, I think, talking about the sewer fund, which we have the ARPA of fifty-two thousand. I believe there was some pumps that were being purchased.
Yeah, and I found that for sure from Darren, but I will check on that, because they talked about some supplies that already ordered. But I don't know if they've already ordered those or not.
But those definitely qualify within the budget that, you know, we have that ARPA budget item and they needed those pumps. And so those definitely qualify for the ARPA money and would be a wise way to, you know, spend that money.
I know they've been getting some replacement pieces and he also said it would be nice to have some extra pumps if we had any money. Which is something we probably, but it doesn't really sound like in our sewer fund we do. And as far as storm water, Jared, it was like clear back when we were talking about budget, writing that list of those thirteen projects. So we are, we are not at a loss of projects to spend that money from and we don't even have really an impact fee for storm water and we should. We don't have an impact fee for roads, which we should. So that's something we need to possibly look at when we're redoing our impact fees. To actually include that. And I know, uh, J U B is working on those, um, analysis of what we can do with that, so.
So definitely, you know, relooking at your impact fees on a regular basis is, in my opinion, a very valuable, uh, resource to look at. To, you know, definitely make those developers pay for the, the impact that they're having on the community instead of the current citizens. So that's what impact fees are for.
So what was the bill on the fifty-nine hundred, three hundred something?
On the fifty-nine hundred, it's like, it's like eight hundred and seventeen thousand. Taylor will be here tonight. It's, it was in your package.
Yeah.
So he's going to come and do that presentation, but he, he's also going to explain to that he's applied for a grant. Where we could possibly get six hundred thousand of that, which we helped, but again, grant money's not guaranteed.
Where's that grant, a grant with?
It was an agricultural, been announced at Oberon Leukovig.
So we could use the ARPA money for that as well.
Yeah, we would just have to shift it.
Yeah, yeah.
So jumping on that, um, we agreed to pay for materials.
We're only paying for materials.
They have all this, they have all this mobilization, traffic control, SWIP, all that stuff.
This is what materials these three things are.
Actually, actually, that's probably not either. That's landscape restoration, that's.
I can buy some cheaper mailboxes. Hey, we know somebody.
Three hundred dollars a mailbox, are you kidding me?
Yeah, you got a connection there?
That Taylor's coming tonight to make this presentation, and so ask him all those questions, because they, him and Jared have been working on this now for a same time.
So my, my question, um, just to kinda get through some of this, so it looks like all the shop and maintenance guys' budgets are maxed out or close to, is Jared aware of that?
He has been provided a copy of the financials, um.
So is something being put there that he doesn't know about?
That's, he's the one coding it, so it's really, you know, him. But then the question comes to me, to my mind, is, was the budget done effectively? Because if he's this far into the year, and I mean, I have full confidence in Jared that he's not going out and buying, you know, something crazy. Yeah, so I'm sitting there saying, what causes, Jared, do we need to increase your budget? Is there a need to increase this so you can effectively do your job? Because, you know, I don't want them to not effectively do their job either. So it's a juggling act, it definitely is, and so that's, that's more so the question I asked Jared is, Jared, what's going on, do we need to increase your budget, do we need to relook at this? Because, you know, what, what, just what's going on, you know, let's communicate and, you know, find out.
Maybe you could ask and say, hey, do you wear this?
And it could be that he's used to that account number as opposed to another, and so maybe he uses that one as opposed to each little line item. Because like I said, you know, departments within the total is what we kinda look at. But yeah, definitely something we can discuss with him.
Arena maintenance, I don't know, you probably know what happened there, that's a hundred and sixty-four percent.
Yeah. I think, um, part of the arena maintenance was, if I remember, is it, yeah, it's what I think it is. Um, there is a thirty, I wanna say it was thirty-four hundred or something like that, um, that we had to replace the chutes for the cattle. It was completely ruined, and so before we could have Hooper Tomato Days, we had a large expense there. So, yeah. But that was more maintenance, you know, how do you, uh, say that's because of Tomato Days, or is it because people use the facility? So, that was kinda one of those things.
Do you know how many city employees pull from sellers and wages and just highways on page seven?
Um, so, the employees actually can, were, they're allocated, so not just an employee can't, doesn't necessarily a hundred percent pull from there. So it's based on what they do. I have asked Jared to reallocate those and to reconsider how many hours or what percentage of time each employee's spending in those departments, so that we can reconsider where we're at with those and see exactly. But I could definitely research that and tell you who and how many, how much percentage-wise, I'm happy to do that, if you'd like me to, yeah.
Okay, I just have one thing we have to talk about really quick before we move out of work meeting. Um, so keep questions, because, you know, she'll be up here to talk about this as well. So, um, yesterday we received the management agreement for the house, and there were a couple of things on here that we just needed to discuss that were a little bit different than we had talked about. So, one thing was, we had talked about, and I went back and listened to our minutes, and it was on our May second meeting, and we had talked about not having any animals in the house, any pets. And I, that was one thing that we had talked about. We'd also talked about doing a six-month lease and then a month-to-month. But when we received this, there is a pet addendum, and they do have two large dogs living in the house. And so I just didn't know if that's something, I called and talked to our insurance company about that. And so there's a couple of things we need to, and not, we can't make any decisions, this is just a work meeting, but, you know, this might be something that we need to consider. And they have not listed Hooper either on their insurance policy, so they're required to do an insurance policy. And he said that we need to make sure, that we must be added as the additional insured, and instead of us being added, they've added themselves. And he said it shouldn't be this resolution property management, it needs to be Hooper City. Because he said even if there's a fire or something, their policy should pay first before our policy does. So, um, and Brandon's going to be on Zoom here about seven, but they said we need to decide what we want to do with this. If we're okay, if everybody is okay with having the animals in the house, if it's something that we're not, then, and I, I didn't know if that was something that, he said it's one thing, you know, if they knew that they weren't supposed, like, if, like, if we conveyed this properly to them, that they couldn't, and, and it's about the length of the contract, and then they went ahead and did it anyway, then that's one thing, but if maybe we didn't properly convey that to them. But I went back and listened to the minutes, and it specifically, when we did, we said, no, we did talk about no animals, and we did talk about the six months within a month-to-month contract. So do any of you have an opinion on this as far as animals?
Yeah, it's what the contract says, yeah.
No, it doesn't, but that's the problem.
Well, I thought we did.
We, we talked about it, but then when we, you know, like I said, when we got this contract, and I tried to do all the pages and highlight them, because then when I went through, it says pets, animals, including, including service and assistant, and it said that they are allowed if it's authorized in writing. And so they did an addendum to the contract, and so they've listed their two animals down here, and they have to pay an additional, but I don't know if we get that additional, but we know that there, sometimes, animals are hard on houses, one of them's a ninety-nine pound one, and the other one's a fifty-five pound one, and so, and another thing that was a little bit of a concern is this is next to a park, our yard isn't fenced in, and, you know, we have the horse trailers that are parking there, and the breed of animal is one that sometimes can be aggressive, not necessarily, it's just from dog to dog. So that's something if we are going to then want to put a fence around.
It's just easier to say no animals, we're just setting ourselves up for that, I mean, in my opinion.
Well, that, that was the concerns from the insurance, when I, I called them, I said, what should we do with this? And so he said, you know, i- if, if we told them that they couldn't, but I, but I think part of the problem is, you know, like I say, and Morgan had asked multiple times and just received a copy of this yesterday. And so when I was going through it, I, I, so do you want me just to check with, you know, Reed and Brandon and see what our options are now? Does everyone feel?
Where it's already done, I don't know if we can.
Yeah, I, I think it was pretty clear to begin with that there were no animals, to Scott Larson. I think, I think it was clear going into this that there were, there was not to be animals in the house.
I thought, I thought that too.
But if they've done the math, I don't know legally, there at least there are.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it was, it was, I mean, that, those are the things that I, that I had highlighted, you know? For one thing, for no matter what, they've got to change and put us on their insurance policy, not the company. And so that, that was one of the things, and then the other thing was the animals. And then, you know, again, they had assigned this addendum that was towards the back, and it said, it lists their dogs. Okay, well, I'll check with Brandon, and I'm just telling, going back to minutes, that we had said that. And do you want, and are, how do we feel about them, the six-month, then month-to-month contract? Or do you want to, so they signed a year contract, and again, I went back to listen, and we had motioned to have it be a six-month, then with a month-to-month.
Well, I, I personally don't have a problem with someone signing a year lease if they want to. I mean, I don't think we have to, I, I don't know, I, lots of people like to sign a year lease, just, you know, just looking at where they're gonna be, but I guess we can have that be an option.
Yeah, well, we, I can bring that up, turn to him and just ask him, tell Brandon, according to what, you know, or Reed, the motion was made, this is what city council motioned, and it was just different, and see what he wants to do with it, so.
Okay, okay, thank you. Did any of you want a business card, so you have my contact easier? You, you probably have me.
I, I.
I was gonna say, I, I know I've talked to you guys, but you know where I'm at. If it's easier, then that's great, you better still.
I didn't find it yet, but I'll, when I'm up there, I'll.
If not, you know how to get me, huh?
Yes, I do.
And Morgan knows how to guide you to me.
Okay, we'd like to welcome, my mic, we'd like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting tonight, November twenty-first. We are going to go ahead and have a pledge of allegiance by council member Marigoni, and then a reference by council member Hill.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear kind, how we've followed the group of two, we gather together tonight as a city council and as a community. We're grateful for the opportunity that affords us to gather in such a place and at such a time. We're grateful for the freedoms we enjoy, for the nation we live in, and for the constitution of the United States that protects us. We're thankful for, um, the many blessings and opportunities that are ours each day. We ask the Father for protection against, um, the things that may harm us as a community, um, the elements, from, uh, the crimes that, um, with our nation, please protect us from those things. Please protect the police department and the fire department as they do their jobs each day to protect our community. They will be washed over and kept safe from harm. We pray for a civil meeting this evening, that we may discuss things that are beneficial to our community, and that we may make decisions that are as such. We're grateful again for all we have, and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. So, a couple of upcoming events, I just wanted to make you aware of. This is an upcoming event, but just to shout out to Roy High School's football team, who played in the state playoffs today. They ended up not winning, but they have had a wonderful season. We have a lot of residents and students from Hooper that attend Roy High School, so we really appreciate those efforts. Another announcement, so we were given this flyer in the county, and it is called the Healthy Homes Program. And they have grants that are available to help people to improve, it, it, I'll just give you a couple of the things they said. Get the lead out, eliminate moisture and mold, manage pets safely, clean up indoor air, plant home safety. And so you can apply for a grant if you happen to have a rental unit, it isn't your income, but it would be the income of the people that are renting. So if anyone is interested in this, if you go to the Weaver Morgan Health Department and go under the Healthy Homes Program, they said as of today, I think they'd only had two or three people apply, and they can offer up to a hundred grants. So if you know of anybody who want any more information, we'll, uh, post this out, and come up and ask me if we can give you more information on that. Oh, and I forgot, um, to mention that we do have Brandon Richards on Zoom tonight, so he is representing us. Okay, another announcement is, we are still in need of a crossing guard to be on fifty-one hundred west and thirty-five twenty-five, thirty-five seventy-five. I always get confused which it is. It's where it comes out at the road from there with the Quell Meadows and Quell Estates, those subdivisions. So we currently are taking turns, West Haven employees and Hooper City employees. So if any of you know of someone, and please pass on that information, because that is something that we need to get done. Another thing too, at the end of December, starting first of January, we will have three positions open for our planning commission. So if you go to our website for beginning of December, even possibly next week, you can see to apply. So even if you possibly applied in the past, we still want you to probably reapply, because we will be, be doing interviews for that. And then the last thing is on December ninth, Santa Claus is going to come to Hooper. And so that is a Monday, and there, he will be here in our building from six o'clock until seven-thirty. He will be here along with Mrs. Claus, there'll be a few others, um, possibly a reindeer and an elf, and we'll be here to visit with the children, there's going to be some live animals outside, and you'll be seeing posters. We're going to be sending notices home to all of the elementary children, I just wanted to make you aware of that, that is on December ninth. Okay, so let's start with our consent items. The first thing is the approval of the minutes dated November the sixth, twenty-twenty-four. Council, I'm sure you've had a chance to go through those, was there any questions, concerns on the minutes?
Um, on the motion that for the grant grants we're gonna apply for, so.
So I think that might be the seven. Is that, was that the seven? That, that's, that's okay, yeah, yeah, we have two different ones, that's okay. So first we'll do the six, and then we have four dot five. So on the six, was there any questions, any changes?
I'm having the motion to approve the minutes from November sixth, twenty-four.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Hill, is there a second?
One second.
Second was made by council member Marigoni, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Okay, now to yours, Bryce on this table.
So on the grant grants, um, I know Deborah reached out to me, like, if there's any expenses incurred in, like, doing any of these grant grants, that's gonna be taken care of. I, I, I don't personally, anything major, but is that?
Expenses as of hiring someone, do you think, or what?
Like on the, on the landscapes, if you get someone to draw a design?
Oh.
That type of thing, I, I, I don't anticipate it being a lot. So if we motion that, will those expenses be covered in this motion, or do we need to?
Yeah, so I mentioned this to Steve and to Jared, and they didn't, I think, from the, when the park was originally drawn up, there's already a giraffe that is drawn, like a picture, and they felt like they could just go ahead and get me those prices.
There, will there still be coordination, like a grant?
Oh, oh, for sure, yes, there will be, yes.
So somebody just probably take a couple hours, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't think, that's what I mean. So I don't really foresee any expenses with that, um, but I, I don't really see any. I, I, because he brought up the map and showed, I think he may have been at one of our staff meetings, we actually have that, where they actually showed like trees and all of that, so I think that's already pretty much been drawn up, okay, so, good. Okay, there was only one thing that I had saw in these minutes that we wanted to make sure, because when we talked about the furniture in the rental home, and I had mentioned the refrigerator, washer, dryer, um, I, I didn't mention microwave, and we wanted to make sure that the microwave was left in the, in the house as well. So that was just a, one thing that I, I had noticed, that we would wanna make sure we get that in the reunion, was the microwave. That's on page. Anybody else have any? Okay, if we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll motion for the approval of minutes dated November seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, the motion was made by council member Wilcox, is there a second?
One second.
Second made by council member Hill, any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, so, the next thing that we have on our agenda is a discussion, and we're really happy to have County Moss here, who is our city treasurer, to go through this presentation.
Thank you. I'll keep it short, because we kinda went through a lot of it in the, um, work session, so, um, I'll just quickly go over, but you all have had a chance to look at them, and also we discussed them in detail, and then of course, you know, if you have any questions, feel free to call me. I'm always available to, you know, discuss, uh, the county. I'm always available to, you know, discuss the county numbers. I live for it in a crazy way. So anyways, overall, the city right now, we're sitting at about 28% of our revenue in budget. And then also with the expenditure for about 23%, we discussed kind of some of the things that contribute to that. Mainly timing with the revenue, with the property taxes, those come in a big lump sum. And so of course, we've not received those yet, but 33% of the year has passed, so only 28% has been received. But it's not alarming because we don't have that property tax revenue yet. So otherwise, we discussed any areas that we have concern in that. Expenditures, they're pretty much on track. Just a couple, recreation is a little bit over to date. But we talked about that relating to Tomato Days and the timing of that. And then the parks is at 33.4%, which is right within realm, but at the same token, you know, we've had some seasonal expenses with that. Everything else pretty much appears within reason. We did have with the general fund, we had the 165,000 of ARPA money that is still needing to be designated. And all I need to do is just get direction from the council that I want, that you want that. Against the lease charges that we talked about in the meeting. So if, you know, you just direct me that way, that's the way I will go. So does anybody have a problem if I go ahead and do that?
So we need to do it all too.
Well, if, if you don't want me to do it, just tell me. How's that?
Probably should do it, you know, official, so we're doing it correctly. So when we talked about sewer, 5500 West project or waste...
Or the pumps. We talked about possible pumps.
Sewer, right?
Yeah.
So what if we just allocated it to the sewer fund?
Both funds, both amounts?
Both amounts.
If we do that, we will have to do it in the budget. And then also where we're transferring from a general fund into an enterprise fund. I don't know if ARPA is exempt from this, but typically we would have to public notice if we move from general to enterprise.
So what if we allocate it to the 5500 West project?
Then we're just simply allocating it to 50, that, that project because it is in another general, or another government fund because it is a capital projects fund. It's governmental, that's still fine. So, yeah. Roundabout way, yes, that's okay. So. You want to do it to that, that, that project that?
Yeah, that's, that's our direction.
Okay, I will put it to that. And then with the sewer funds, what, do you want to hold on that for a little bit longer or do you want to direct me on that one?
Is that the money that's already listed in our pen, even the sewer?
Yeah, the 52,000. Do we want to hold on that for another month and direct me then?
It's already allocated.
It's already allocated.
Well, it's allocated to sewer, but we have to determine what we're spending it on.
That's probably a discussion with Jared.
Yeah, sewer parts. I know it's going to be sewer parts.
We had talked that there was some pumps that were being purchased. We just need to make sure we do that in the time and fashion, so.
Okay.
And it, you know, it, it's pretty, the ARPA money is pretty broad. You just have to simply direct me where to put it.
Okay, we can find that out from there and see was that money?
Okay, so we'll hold on that one. The other one I'll go ahead and allocate, so, okay. That was a little bit roundabout way, but anyways. The other sections of the financials, we did break out the utility funds into sewer garbage and stormwater so that we can account for each one of those and make sure that they're staying more on budget and that the fees are covering that particular service that we're providing to the citizens. So I think that was definitely an effective thing to do and we can see that garbage is pretty much where it needs to be. Stormwater is exactly as we suspected, it's collecting, you know, enough money, but we do have some projects that are coming up that we need to spend those funds on. But then sewer, as of right now, it's okay, but it could definitely, it's, it's tight. Let's put it that way. So, but we'll continue to monitor that and make sure that we're within reason on that, so. Is there any other questions or any other?
I think, I think we discussed this in the meeting, but could you provide us with JUV invoices? And then also is it possible to do a 5500 West project presentation or an update if we're out on that? It's like I've heard we're over budget, so what does that exactly mean?
So I can provide you like an account in detail as far as knowing whether it's over budget or not. I would probably say JUV would be the better resource on that because I am not a construction worker, so.
Presentation at our next meeting on that. Taylor, would you be willing at our next meeting?
Yeah, I have all that information so I can put it together and present.
Okay, yeah.
But you can't do invoices.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll work with Morgan on gathering them and getting them. And then reconsidering if some of those do need to be allocated to other funds as well as far as the coding. I can look into that deeper, so. Okay, well, as always, you're welcome to call me if you have any questions or email me, so, okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Kenny. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is we're going to have a public hearing on the speed limit change to 5500 West from 40 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. This was something that was discussed in our last meeting. So just to recap, at that time, we had talked about possibly having all of the speed limits on our collector roads and Hooper being a consistent 30 miles an hour. So we have, if you go south on 5500 West, from 5500 South to the Davis County line, the Hooper portion is 30 miles an hour. The Davis County portion, if you continue, is 30. From 5500 South to 4,000 South, so almost a mile and a half, mile and three quarter block, it's 40. Then you go from 4,000 South, North, it changes back to 30. And so we have a public hearing. I had sent out a marriage report that was in the packet as well as online. And these are just some of the things that we've talked about doing it. And last meeting, we changed it from 4,700 West to 30 miles an hour, 5,100 West to 30, to 30 miles an hour. For the last couple of years, as they were working on the road, it was actually 30 miles an hour from about 4,600. There was another sign that was south of that that changed it to 40. We tried to kind of keep some consistency. And a couple of other things I mentioned is Hooper North Park is located on 5500 West. On days such as soccer Saturday or lacrosse or football, if you've traveled up and down this road, sometimes there's cars parked on both sides, which limits the sight of view. And there's four bus stops that are located along 5500 West in that space. From 5500, from, if you go further along, there's open drain ditches along 55. And from, if you go down further, from 4,600 South down to the Simp' Lare is those students are required to walk. And then we have a lot of children and students that walk to the pickleball and the basketball courts that are also located on Longish Road. So I don't know, do you want to have any discussion on this first, open it up in public hearing first? So what would you like to add to council?
Public comment, yeah.
Okay, so I just need someone to make a motion to open the meeting to a public hearing. Okay, that motion was made by Councilmember Hill. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second was made by Councilmember Wilcox. So now we move into a public hearing. You are welcome to come up to the microphone and state your name and you have three minutes to give a public comment on this issue.
Courtney Gold, 114291 South, 5,100 West. Thank you for dropping the speed limit on there. Should have been, in my mind, it should have been done 15 years ago, but it's made quite the difference. I've no, I mean, I first noticed it when I seen the speed limit. One night I was driving home, seeing that. I had to drive it all and see if, the whole road was changed, which it was. And anyway, they, it's a lot quieter. I mean, you know, the speeders are still going to speak, you know. I've even seen some warnings or even tickets issued since then, you know, which is good. But it's just made it a lot quieter and nicer to live there. So I want to thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You've done a good job.
Can you pull the microphone up? It's kind of tipped. Yes.
For that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Cindy Bennett, I wrote it down because I was thinking, I've been thinking about my thoughts for a while. Anyway, I've lived on 5500 West almost my entire life, except for about six years when I lived across from the irrigation company. Otherwise, I've just lived across the street. Now I just live off of 5500 and drive every day to get to my house. People drive too fast. My kids have a bus stop on the corner of 4350 and 5500. Hardly anyone slows down when they drive past. I've watched cars pass the bus because they are in too big of a hurry. I walk my dog and my baby down 5500 almost every day. Almost no one slows down to go past us, or they also don't know that they have a steering wheel that turns. There are ditches on both sides of the road, so there is nowhere to walk but on the road. I have been afraid for my dog numerous times. I don't know where to go with my stroller because the only place I have is the road. I stand at the corner of 4350 and talk to my friend and, and we watch the cars speed by. In the last year, I have had three different people pull out in front of me at 4,600 South. I've been watching because if I hadn't been watching them and slamming on my brakes, I would have gotten into a wreck. Plus, when there's stuff going on at the park, it's hard to even see, so it would be safer to lower the speed limit there. 40 is too fast for a small town residential area. It's 30 north of 4,000 and south of, north of 4,000 South and south of 5,500 South. It is all of the same road. It just makes sense to change the entire road to 30 so it's all the same. People are going to speed no matter what, but at least if it's lower, it's safer for those of us who have to deal with the fast cars going by. Usually it seems like people go 10 miles over the speed limit. So if it's 30, then maybe people will actually only go 40 or less for those of us that actually follow the speed limit. Thank you.
Jeff Bennett. Basically, for all the reasons that Mayor Bingham said, it makes sense in my mind that the speed limit be lowered. Like Cindy said, we have kids at a bus stop, multiple kids at a bus stop, that people really don't pay attention. And so we want to lower the risk. That just makes sense to me to lower the risk, drop the speed down. People are going still faster. And maybe if they get hit a couple of times, like Courtney said, maybe if they get picked up for a ticket, then it'll jog their, their memory to go a little bit slower. First and foremost for me has to do with my kid's safety and just being on that road more often than, than I would probably like anyways. They, I think it should be lowered.
Good evening, Travis Bates. I am a resident of Hooper. I'm finding as I get older, I'm just not in that big of a hurry. So the speed limit's pretty arbitrary to me, but I got an earful from my wife and I'm glad she's not here tonight. My only ask is if we're going to change the speed limits on these roads that we warm residents. Those signs, those 30 mile an hour signs went up really fast after the last meeting. I don't know if we can move, I know on 5,100, there's one of the flashing yellow signs. If we can move that to the front of the road from either side. Law enforcement was there very quickly. Councilperson, Mayor, Mayor Gomis checked into it for me that they were only issuing warnings, thank goodness. Because that's kind of dirty pool to show up the second day and start issuing citations. But I think if we could get, borrow a sign from UDOT, maybe advertise that to help people slow down. Because I think people that have lived here a long time aren't going to pay attention to those signs that have changed and to slow that traffic to get that out. So the second piece would be the section on 4,700 to the north side. Do we know when West Haven is going to be changing that from 35? Because that was kind of the whole reason that really got this rolling. Third question is why we're having a public hearing about one road when the other two were just pushed through. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I can answer one question. The flashing sign is actually West Haven's. So they, the, West Haven only goes to 4,825 South, and so we really couldn't move it. Anyway, that's their sign.
Do you think they noticed what was missing?
I'm not sure. I did check into those signs and they are $2,500 apiece, which is something that we might want to consider in another year's budget.
Maybe even the speed trailer.
Yeah, yeah. The speed trailer's been brought in for the winter. We don't have that out during the winter because they start plowing the roads. And so it's already been brought in, so it's already in the yards for the winter. So, and I appreciate the warnings. I think that was good. And that's, that's an idea. And maybe we could end up, if this ends up going through, or even for the other roads, getting something that might announce that better. So thank you.
To answer your other question, you know, why do we have a public hearing? We were told on our last meeting that West Haven had already voted and was, were changing theirs, their speed, all their speed limits. They told us that they're been done. So we weren't involved in the process upfront either. So we're basically forced to change on the shared roads with West Haven.
So 51?
Yeah, 51. Well, we shared, parts of 47 and 47 as well. Not about the whole road, but parts of it. So it's kind of like, you know, it would have been nice to maybe meet with them too and, and discuss, you know, our options about the community, how they input, but we really, I'm sure I can have their hands.
4,700, after I learned that they only voted to change it on 5,100, not on, but still going from 25 to 30 was a little bit easier for residents to go from 25 to 35.
Sure.
So if we would have changed it the same that West Haven, it would have gone up to 35. So even with that, going to 30 is probably a little bit easier for those residents than having it have jumped up to the 10.
Sure.
Is there anybody else that wanted to make a comment?
I'm Dan Warwood, the 5518 West, 4350 South. If you're going to change this, the speed limit, my personal opinion is it won't help. Because I've lived on that road, I drive on that road and I have been followed, tailgated all the way down that road. And it's not the people that live in the area, it's the people that go from 5,500 West to the new subdivision at the north end. I can promise that. The other one is, is all the high school kids in, early in the morning, they're late for school. So what do they do? They speed down 5,500. I sat there and watched them. So that's the whole thing that I look at, is if we're going to change it to 30 miles an hour or 35, then we need to have police there that will catch people, not in the middle of the day, but when they're going home from work or going to work or going to school or home from school. Because it's not going to do any good. It's just like the corner of the city office buildings. I've been on that corner and I see the signs that says, oh, no parking. And what do I see? Seven or eight cars park there all the time when they're doing football or soccer. Doesn't change. Nobody's doing anything different. So unless we can get police there, changing the speed limit's not going to do any good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'm, I'm like your wife. I'm Andrew Warwood. I live at 5201 West, 4175 South. I, I was not pleasantly surprised to see it at 30. I do empathize with some of the people that live on 5,100 West. I'm one of the ones that goes 40 miles an hour down that road. And I drive it at 5:30 in the morning when there's nobody else there. I've never seen a cop, which is a fine. I'm not, I'm not accusing this sheriff, but I know that they're shorthanded right now. But I guess my, my concern is similar to, to what Dan said is, I, I've never... But I guess my concern is similar to what Dan said, is I've never seen a cop on that road. And every morning, I'm tailgated on fifty-one-hundred west because I go forty miles an hour. This week, I actually saw the sign. I thought, "Am I hallucinating?" There's a flashing sign when I came home from work one day, and I was like, "Am I hallucinating?" I was going forty-three, I think. And I said, "No, I had been going forty-three," so that's the three that was in my mind. And then my wife said, "Hey, did you see on Facebook that it changed to thirty miles an hour?" I'm thinking, "What?" I've driven fifty-one-hundred west and fifty-five-hundred west for the last, well, since I've got my driver's license before, you know, learner's permit. It's always been forty miles an hour. Somebody must be higher, you know, up in the night. And it's not. It's only, I calculated it, I'm a dork. I live all the, all the way at the end of, north end of fifty-one-hundred, and I drive to fifty-five-hundred south, and then I hang a left on fifty-five-hundred west in the mornings. It's only a minute in the morning, and it's a minute at night. A difference for me. The problem is, is I've been almost run off the road twice this week, going thirty miles an hour. And I almost go thirty-five just to not get run off the road. I've been passed once, and I had five cars behind me the other morning at five-thirty in the morning. And I don't know, I don't need to drive at five-thirty in the morning. It's not rush hour, normally. So my concern is similar to, like, I'm concerned with the thirty. I think thirty-five would be okay. I think that's half a medium. But I'm more concerned with the fact that if we don't find a way to work with the sheriff's department to get more deputies in Hooper, patrolling our roads, people are still going to be sixty miles an hour like I've seen them do on fifty-one-hundred and forty-one-hundred and, or more. They're just going to continue to do that. And then it puts us at even a greater risk of difference in speed, which is a factor in wrecks. And I have, I don't see very many wrecks on fifty-one-hundred west or fifty-five-hundred west. And so that's where I'm more concerned with, have we made a decision to change it to thirty? And that's going to cause more accidents or more issues if we don't enforce it. So, thank you for your time, and hopefully you make the right decision, whatever that is.
Thank you.
My name is Stacy Gates, and I'm a resident here at Hooper. I don't currently live on fifty-five-hundred, but I do have kids that walk to the park and ride their bike to the park, and walk to St. Clair and ride their bike to St. Clair, and there's no sidewalks. I guess I don't really see what the harm is in lowering the speed limit. I realize it's going to take people a little bit of time to recognize that the speed limit is slower. But if it's going to help keep speeds down and help keep our kids safer, I don't really see why this is an issue with people. And also just, I did the math on it. I like math. It's a difference of one minute. It takes a minute longer to drive thirty from four thousand to fifty-five. So it's not going to make a huge difference in people's lives if they're driving thirty versus forty. So anyway, that's my thoughts on it. I would like to see it lowered. I see a lot of kids on that road. My kids are ones included on that, and I don't want them flipped off on the side of the road because there's no sidewalks. So they're riding their bike there in the road. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I speak twice?
Sure.
I was just going to say, it only takes you forty seconds to a minute. Depends on how fast the accelerator rate when you, you know, take off from four thousand to fifty-five. But, and then also, Weber County, it used to be thirty-five over there. It used to be thirty-five miles an hour, and it changed to thirty when West Haven changed, when Hooper changed. But then, like, stopping distance from thirty to, from thirty miles an hour to forty miles an hour, you're what, one-ten to one-sixty-five in stopping distance. You know, you've got the park out here, you know, the kids, the parking, you know, the car can ride out to the back of the road. The kids could dart out, you know. Right there, and just being slower, I think it's, it'd be a safer, safer deal for the park. And the kids walking to school, I mean, they're walking, over there in West Haven, they're walking from there to the new elementary there. There's no sidewalks along any of it. No turn lanes or nothing like that, you know. So, something to think about, I guess. Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? Okay, if not, we need a motion then to bring it back to our regular meeting.
So.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Hill. Is it seconded?
Also.
Seconded by Councilmember Marigoldi. Okay, the meeting now comes back to a discussion amongst the council.
All along has been public safety. That's why we put the signs up right here on the, it's going to be a little clearer in the triangle for people coming, both ways on forty-six-hundred on a busy Saturdays to see past all the parked cars. But we've put the signs up, and like Go said, people still aren't there. So the whole problem is enforcement. You know, you could put up all the signs in the world, say whatever, speed limit, parking, et cetera, et cetera. But there's no enforcement. It doesn't do it yet. So we appreciate the sheriff's department. We understand the blind they're in. That's the, that's the dilemma. Right, so what, you know, the fact about safety is, as we mentioned, you know, one citizen has passed, how many times, retaliated how many times. Is that safer than the alternative of just going to forty? Or is it safer to, hopefully we enforce someday that we catch, you know, pixel that? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So which is, which is more unsafe?
Yeah, because I, you do get a lot of impatient people. I've, you know, as Andrew stated, I think it causes a lot of safety issues as well, passing. And there's a certain demographic that likes to pass me, and I won't mention so much younger than me, but, and it's like, hey. So there again, you know, are they going to be passing safely because they're impatient? Is that going to outweigh, you know, us lowering the speed limit? And I think when people are going, because I've driven that road for thirty mi, I went thirty miles an hour, and then I went thirty-five, then I went forty. So I kind of know my thought process. To me, as just a person, like, going thirty miles an hour sometimes is a little irritating, I'll be honest with you. Especially if no one else is on the road. Thirty-five, it seemed to be, I was okay with that, you know. Forty, I'm okay with that as well, because, you know, I tend to try to be a safe driver. But I'm a little concerned about the thirty. I mean, just, this is my opinion. I think sometimes slowing the speed limit is not going to make it safer, even though we want to think it does. Enforcement is probably the answer. I don't know. What's your thoughts?
Well, living on that road, I do have to say that things have slowed down some. There are still those that are going to go sixty, that they're going to go sixty and have what the speed limit is. But things have quietened down some. We can actually go in our front yard and talk, which we, we do not many of the do. And Hannah, could you tell everybody about the special units in the sheriff's department? Is it dependent upon staffing that you have for this speed issue and things?
So the traffic unit, I guess just to catch up on fifty-one-hundred west, we have been giving the grace period. And as we stand in practice, a long lead has been adopted. We put in a new citation, stop sign. If we lower the speed limit, we give about a thirty-day grace period where we say, we're not going to have any issued warning citations. Make the traffic stop, educate the public, do a warning citation along fifty-one-hundred west, which is the reason why state and Hooper and the county changed that one for the school crossing there. So that drivers are at thirty miles an hour when they have to slow down if they don't see the crossing. They currently doesn't have a proper crossing. They're not dynamiting their brakes from forty to twenty. They're slowing from thirty to twenty, just trying to improve safety for the kids walking to the new elementary school. The traffic unit has been on that road issuing the warning citations. They go for the first month. And they even said that by and large, the average speed right now is forty miles an hour along fifty-one-hundred west. To your point, we have had fifty-eight and fifty-four, which they've got a citation for the eighteen over, not the twenty-eight over that they were at. So they decided based off of the old speed limit and give them a little bit of a grace on that. But they gave a citation as they were grossing violation of the old speed limit that was higher at the time. So if you lower the speed limit on fifty-five, fifty-five, we do the exact same thing. Tell the traffic unit, educate the public, thirty-day grace period, tell them to lose any ground there, try and make the traffic stops. That's essentially what the traffic unit's for. We have two longer days. One works seven to seven, the other one works ten to ten. And they're trying to hit every area that they can.
And they do, they're very effective watching this. They're very, they're very effective at their job, and that's all that they do. And I, I think that a lot of people have a misconception that since the sheriff's department is staffed a little lower right now, that that prevents deputies from giving out tickets and that, but the special unit, that's all they do. Thank you. Any other comments to this special?
Well, I might be a little partial, living across from a park, because there's always a concern when cars start parking along the east of this park, and there's a lot of kids walking up and down the road, waiting for their parents, or their parents waiting for the kids. So I really don't have a problem with it being thirty miles an hour, but I would go along with what Councilman Hill said. It's not, it's not the sign that's making it safe. It's drive. And so I think we have to rely on the sheriff's department to make sure for a while that our thirty mile an hour speed limit sign, that we're pretty serious about that. I mean, that's, that's what it means, and we hope that everybody will comply with that. And same with the parking sign here on the corner. There's no question, if people park through the intersection, you walk at the intersection, you can see. So that's my feelings. You know, having the park right here where there is a lot of youth, a lot of kids in the summertime, it would be a lot safer if people were driving slower. So, but forty miles an hour seems slow too, you know. But maybe at thirty miles an hour, anyway, we need to just get serious about enforcing those speed limits.
Well, I think sometimes, as it's been said, if the speed limit's thirty, they may go forty. But when it's forty, then they think, "Oh, we can go faster." So people are going actually forty-eight, maybe fifty. And so I agree, if we are seriously going to change this to thirty. And again, I'm also, of course, partial because I live on fifty-five-hundred. But besides that, I am leaving this building a lot of the days. And like you mentioned, Councilmember Fowler, when there's things in the park and the cars are parked along the side of the park, that they, when kids are getting outside of their cars, they are right on the edge of the street. And we actually have a little more room on that side. You walk up and down this road, and some places, there is very little room to get off the side of the road. You get further, if you go south of forty-six-hundred, and it really is hard, the distance from the edge of the road to where you can walk. And I know as an adult, as I've walked, I usually end up stopping, or as I'm driving, I actually slow way down to go around them because there's really no where for them to walk. So if it's something we can do, we really pride ourselves in being a rural community, then I feel like let's try to keep it a rural community, and let's get our speed limits down to where they could be manageable, and people will get used to it. And if we could have someone out here patrolling, and, you know, we can maybe see if we could get some signs from UDOT and actually post them on the streets that say thirty miles upcoming, that that would hopefully help.
My feeling is maybe we track thirty-five and have a half a medium and patrol it the same way. Hey, you're four or five miles an hour, you're getting it too.
If we change it to thirty-five, though, it'll be the only collector road in Hooper that's thirty-five, and everywhere else would be thirty.
People wouldn't pay attention.
So I think if we're going to change it to thirty-five, there's no reason to not just have it be thirty and have them, and then people just know.
So that's, that's what I think, so.
Sure.
Well, I'm sure the worst could have been involved in the negotiations, because they have absolutely any.
Right.
Our opinion mattered too, at that point, but it was too late now, right? So, I don't know, thirty, thirty to thirty-five, I mean, I kind of felt the same thing, thirty-five was a half a medium. But where a lot of the decisions for us have been made, forty-seven-hundred west and fifty-one-hundred west, that was kind of something we had to do, just to be able to speed up going north different than going north and south. So that's just an old idea, but fifty-five hundred is exclusive to, so we do have that decision with us. But anyway, there's, I mean, we're spoken here, you're saying, you're going thirty-five and thirty-five to forty. I could mention it takes forty-five seconds to a minute or maybe. But, I mean, it's truly up to the individual to decide how fast they are going.
Well, starting further discussion, if not, if someone would like to make a motion?
Is it a motion item tonight?
It is a motion item tonight. Only with that, guys. I'd like to make a motion that I change the speed limit upon fifty-five-hundred west to thirty miles an hour. Okay, we had a motion made by Councilmember Marigoldi. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second is made by Councilmember Hill. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Fine.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You're in favor? So there is three in favor, correct? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay. So the next thing on our agenda is a discussion and a motion on fifty-nine-hundred west, material costs. And we have Taylor Stocker here, our city engineer from J U B, that will do that presentation for us.
All right, I just first I'd introduce myself as Taylor Stocker. I have been working with Hooper City for over a year as a consultant, responsibilities. Recently, it's kind of taken over the city engineer responsibilities. So, nice to meet you guys. We'll be working together a lot in the future. Yeah, so I came here today to talk about this fifty-nine-hundred west storm drain improvements project. This project to kind of help you guys remember what happened back in July of twenty-twenty-two. It has to deal with grains landing, phase one subdivision. As part of their developers agreement, I'll just read this, as this is stated in the agreement. The developer agrees that in lieu of constructing a landscaped detention basin for this subdivision, that the developer will provide labor and equipment for the construction of a new storm drain outfall from the western boundary of this subdivision to the existing outfall ditch at fifty-nine-hundred west near thirty-eight-hundred south. Developer also agrees to donate ten thousand dollars in cash to be used in conjunction with the storm drain work. So, that was before my time here, but that was an agreement that's already been made by, with the, with the city, between the developer and the city. Maybe I'll go with this now. So that means that the city was just agreed to purchase the materials, and our contractor would install them. So we came up with a cost estimate of what that would be. And actually, I really need to apologize because I sent this out a while ago, and I know- And actually, I really need to apologize because I sent this out a while ago and the number right there says that this would be eight hundred twenty thousand dollars. But while sitting here just kind of reviewing QC my stuff, I actually found a very significant mistake because we can, the price of the pipe in there is the cost to purchase and install, where we only agreed to purchase the pipe. So I hurried and changed that because I got, I've gotten quotes from Old Castle and Geneva Concrete Pipe. So we can actually put those actual numbers in there. And that was, that significantly changed the cost to six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So first of all, that shows you what kind of deal the city actually is getting to make these improvements that's over two hundred thousand dollars just in pipe costs. And hopefully it's even lower than that. But so with this cost estimate, I'm guessing this is more kind of just for budgetary, I mean, for you guys to know that if this needs to be budgeted, this much money needs to be budgeted for this project and that the city can go out and purchase this materials. Would it be helpful if I showed you guys what the project is consisting of? Did you have to see, we have engineered plans ready to go.
Before, I've got a couple of questions. You're looking at this page right here, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, so I can't push them like mobilization, traffic control, are you listing that as part of the materials?
Um, yes, that would be part of the materials. Traffic control for sure. The contractor didn't agree to do the traffic control, we have to make that part of.
So he's, he agreed with labor and equipment, so I'm just, I'm just trying.
Yeah, and maybe, I don't know that.
So like mobilization, that's part of the equipment, that's not a material.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I can see that.
There was part of the full side mobilization, traffic control, SWIP. Number four is usually a public involvement group, I don't know. What is that, public involvement group?
Um, that is a part of the JB. We usually have some employees that are ones that are working with the residents to talk to them about road closures on their streets, times when their driveways aren't going to be accessible, times when the water's going to be shut off. Agreements that had to be made between Mr. Berger's name so that we could adjust the alignment of the storm drain. So that's the number we factored in there for that. That there is a, it's a timing materials thing that we would kind of go with. It wouldn't be a lump sum for forty five thousand dollars, but for the time that we said, hey, will we have the landing group go out there and do this, inform the residents about this? That would be included in the budget.
So Jared would view this with you by chance?
Um, Jared and I worked together on this, yes.
I'm just curious about those.
Yeah, and a lot of these items did come from Jared. And a lot of this cost came from me, so. Cost estimations.
Yeah, I feel like there could be still a little negotiating on those labor types of things because, as I recall, you know, the reason I think the city kind of agreed to this arrangement, labor versus materials, is when the landings was installed, they were required to put in a detention pond. But the level and the depth of the detention pond, because of the high water table there, would always have water. In other words, it wouldn't detain water for a while, always have water. So it was kind of agreed then that rather than put it in a detention pond, we would pipe that dish so there'd be an outfall for, you know, the storm drains and that, to put in that subdivision. So as far as the developer putting in the, you know, providing the labor, there was something in it for him too. In other words, he didn't have to put in a detention pond. And so those labor items, I believe, could be negotiated with them as part of the installation rather than materials. So I'd like to suggest that we do that, you know, because you brought up those costs, Councilman Wilcox, and I think it's a good point, but maybe he could share in that.
And I would say that, I mean, this agreement was made in twenty twenty two, and that might actually be the last time we've actually talked to this, at least I haven't talked to this contractor about this agreement. Maybe someone else has, but yeah, he hasn't seen this list yet. So that definitely needs to happen.
Yeah, and we hadn't seen that list as it is currently. So I, I think he, my opinion is he could share in the cost of that labor, if not all the cost of the labor in installation. And then we go ahead with the materials, with the pipe. Materials being the pipe.
Well, to your point, because that area is not a detention base and it's actually a building.
A building lot, right.
We're making money on the detention base and piece of property.
Yep. And I should point out that time is critical in this point. I mean, they are at phase two, they have final approval for phase two, I believe. And they're probably constructing. We just really don't want them to be done and then be gone, and it might be really a lot harder to get them back. And that also incentivizes him to, we can pressure on him to incentivize it to get this project done as well.
You know, Jared can mention that he thought the labor was about, like, like you take the total of the cost of the project, the labor's about half and the materials half. And so when Jared talked us about it in the staff meeting, he said we felt like this was probably a one point five million dollar project. So to have the developer say that he would pay for the labor costs, and again, just like you said, he didn't want it to be done and then us then be responsible for the entire cost of the project. Maybe you can mention to us about the grant?
Yes, so this is a grant that we became aware of, rural, rural opportunity development grant, I think is what it was called. Rural Community Opportunity Grant. Where we applied for six hundred thousand dollars in grants with a twenty percent match. So by receiving that six hundred thousand dollars, we would still be on the hook for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But the way we thought about it was we were on the hook for six hundred thousand dollars in the first place. So really didn't see an opportu, a downside to at least applying for it, getting eighty percent of this paid for. So that application has been put in. I'm not sure about the timeline when we hear back from it, but if that were the case, then we got a really huge discount on it.
So your thought on that, if we approve the money so that, you know, we lock in funding for the materials and then the grant becomes available? I mean, would, is that, will that be toward the possibility of getting a grant if they know we've already allocated the funding for it? Or did you even have to? Have you already applied for it?
You said we've already applied for it, and that didn't, that wasn't one of the requirements that they asked or questions they asked as part of the application, so.
You could make that part of the motion, though. You could say contention on more disapproval of the grant.
I actually asked Cammy about this too when we received this and said, where do we pull this money from? If we don't get the grant, and she said it would have to come out of our capital projects. If you go back to your financials, there is money in there. This is a substantial amount, it is. So I guess.
The ARPA too, right? We said we move all the money.
So best case scenario, we get the grant, we move the ARPA, then we, but, but if we don't get the grant, which is no guarantee, then, but then again, we have to look at it, and this, I guess, you know, we already had to sign the development agreement in twenty twenty two. I don't, I don't know, it's a lot of money, but it's half, I guess, of what it will be if he completes the development and leaves.
Yeah, and I mean, what I would say is, I mean, if we choose not to spend the money, say, leave it how it is, now that subdivision has, I don't know how many homes was in it, now it has zero detention, zero capacity in storm drain. So first of all, that we did agree to it, but the second of all is, there's really not a good no action option, so.
Not to mention that that pipe takes in more water, more runoff water than just the storm drain from that subdivision. You can get those quite rates south.
Yeah.
If we motion on this as a lock, actually, the total amount's going to change anyway, right?
Yeah.
So we just, we just motion to approve it and there's negotiation with those labor costs, fine items, you're getting us a fine broker. Right, necessarily looking at nineteen thousand, just the project can be formed.
I don't know how this all works, I'm kind of new with how city budgets work, but just to begin purchasing pipe, manholes, possibly other materials, that we can start making those purchases, I think is important.
Maybe that's a Brandon question. If we can make a motion to move forward with this project without an amount, or do we have to actually plug it in about that could change? But it sounds like it's going to change regardless of the motion. Is Brandon on this?
He's, he never popped up.
Oh, we didn't. Oh. More than last few days.
So I did get quotes from Old Castle and Geneva for the concrete structures. I mean, most of these numbers I did, but are estimates. And I definitely could go in and try to figure out more solid, get esten, get quotes from suppliers. That would get a lot firmer numbers than we get, if we're likely to do.
Yeah, but sometime we'll be starting purchasing pipe.
Yeah.
Don't think we can say numbers because we.
No, yeah.
We just need to approve the purchase of the materials to get the project started.
Yeah, I mean, usually that, those are four to six weeks out anyway.
Mobilization is in a material, so we're not necessarily on the hook for that. Pipe we are, right? Yeah.
Any other questions for Taylor? Is there someone ready to make a motion now? Do we need more discussion on this?
Make a motion yes tonight? Well, I would go ahead and make a motion that we approved a project on fifty nine hundred west for the cost of materials.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilmember Bowers. Is there a second?
All second.
Second was made by Councilmember Wilcox. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and so the last thing on our agenda is about the senior lunches. And I know, Debbie, you had asked once about what that would be, and we had never made a motion to bring it to the budget. And since then, there's also been something else that's came up. And so again, I tried to do a merit report to kind of report on this. Since the time when we brought this up, so just for everyone's information, Weaver Human Services used to provide meals here at Cooper City every Thursday, and it was a suggested donation of four dollars. With federal cutbacks, they were no longer able to do that. And ours was one of the centers that they said they were no longer going to provide the meals. So two parts of this. We had already discussed about, about supporting the Roy Hillside Senior Center. And at the time, I believe, they told us it was two thousand dollars that we had discussed. Since then, I actually received this information from Mayor Dan Roy in Roy. And they said that there needs to be twelve thousand additional dollars in order to keep their center going. So Roy currently has a budget of eighty thousand dollars yearly for their senior center. And so they're asking West Haven, ourselves, and Roy to each pay the four thousand dollars annually to keep the Roy Center going. And I've included this chart that is on the back of this report that shows, because at the time when Ryan and I went to a meeting, we actually asked, and these are the numbers that they gave us, so there's, and these are monthly numbers. Nineteen that are attending the Golden Hours, which is in Ogden. Two that are attending the North View, which is North Ogden and Pleasant View combined. Twenty-eight that are attending Roy, nine that are attending Washington Terrace, and it's Washington Terrace, South Ogden combined. For a total of fifty-eight of our Cooper residents that are actually attending these other centers every month. But that is something that I, he asked if I would bring it to our city council to vote on. So that's, that's one part of it. So they're asking for us to give four thousand dollars annually. So again, this is our, our vote, and then it will also depend if West Haven votes to approve the four thousand and Roy City Council approves to do the additional four thousand. Okay, so in addition to that, this other part. So we now are having lunch for our seniors the first and third Wednesday of every month. We have a catering that is done by, no, I don't remember the name of it. I know Simpson's Catering, okay, thank you. And this is by Cadengale Simpson. They are catering the meals for fifteen dollars a meal. The suggested donation again is four dollars a meal. Chris Morris and Blair Cottle, they have arranged for donations. And so Cooper City has already received twelve hundred and fifty dollars in donations to help cover these meals. And what we would be responsible for then is eleven dollars a meal to cover one of the Wednesdays. So we would be covering for twelve meals. And so I did it at the fifteen residents. Yesterday, we probably had, had close to fifteen residents. And they had a really nice Thanksgiving dinner that included all, all of the fixings. And so if you take the fifteen residents a month times eleven dollars, that comes to the one hundred and sixty-five dollars a month. Or this budget of nineteen hundred and eighty dollars for the year for us to pay for our seniors for once, one meal a month. And so our total allocation, if we add up those, would be four thousand dollars that we would be giving to Roy. We've actually be giving it to Weaver Human Services, but it would be to keep the Roy Center open, and then also the nineteen hundred and eighty dollars.
So six thousand a year.
I do, I hear.
I'll ask you that.
Would be six thousand a year.
So two questions on the Roy Center. If we don't give them the four thousand, do they just tell our people they can't come anymore? Do they check the ID at the door or?
Do you know? I, I don't know. And, and I think what will happen if, because we don't know, like you said, if West Haven and if Roy are going to approve to pay this either. So he, so, so that's a good question, Ryan, and I don't know. If all of us say no, then, because when Weaver Human Services, we were at that meeting, they really debated about how they were going to keep open. And, and like they said, and you know, I put this in here, they said, well, their cities are already helping each other out. Like they said, you know, South Ogden, Washington Terrace, I thought, so, excuse me, they think it's understandable that we help out Roy. So, so with that, and that's your question, Ryan, I don't know.
Sure, that, that was just a game of decisions. But so my second question is, when we went to the meeting, Weaver Human Services wanted to keep open currently three centers, correct? And then eventually moved two, correct? Roy was one of those centers that are trying to keep open, so they already get funds, budget money from Weaver Human Services to stay open. Okay, so why are they asking us now for more?
So I don't, I think that by the time they finally got through the cutting block, I don't know that Roy made it.
They did not make it.
So I think according to this email I received from Mayor Dan Roy.
They're budgeting the whole thing from Roy City.
Yeah, they would, they would have to budget the whole thing from their city.
That doesn't make any sense. I mean, that facility was built specifically for seniors in the area, the whole area. Who knows what it cost initially, right?
Yeah, I know they received a grant because back then they allowed grants. And like I said, he said they're already in their budgeting, they've already budgeted eighty thousand a year, which will they, will continue to do. So I think they're thinking that they're, they will no longer have a center unless if the surrounding ones are willing to go in on it.
So like Riverdale and Self-Sustaining, maybe.
Riverdale, Self-Sustaining.
So the two Weaver County is gonna support is, which ones? The, the North Ogden?
I s- I, I don't know, and they, one time they talked about maybe even being able to keep three going.
Yeah.
So I suspect it'd probably be the North Ogden one, the Washington Terrace, and the Ogden, which is the Golden Hours.
Okay. I don't know how we're gonna support it, you know?
Yeah, and like I said, I, you know, I quoted what he said, like he, we can put four existing centers with some level of financial collaboration. I, I quoted that from like Mayor Dan Roy. So I told him I would ask. It has to be a city council vote on what we want to do with that.
So Roy City is, in effect, supporting the eighty-four thousand a month a year, West Haven four and Hoover Forks.
Yeah, yes. Because, um, because also in this email, he said he went back to Weaver Human Services and said, you have to give me some kind of amount. I can't just go to these other cities and say, will you support this? When we're not even telling them how much money we're asking them for, and so then that's what they told him, that we would get four thousand.
And here's my other argument. You look at the numbers in this chart, and Roy is like number three in attendance for total seniors attending, actually number two. They have five hundred and eighty-eight members of the community attending various different places to their own center. They have four hundred and eighty-four people from their own community going to that center. Number one is Ogden, Golden Hours, of course, of a thousand fifty-six, but Roy's like number two on that old chart. So why in the world would Weaver support the number two attended center in the old county? That's, that's, where's the commissionable? We got questions.
Yeah, well, and he, you know, said too, that they just said the other ones have support from other cities and Roy does not have financial support from other cities. Yeah, it was an interesting meeting those ones, we went to West Haven, right?
It's thirty-three thousand more, it's quite far off. Who needs our, that, mind for this? Well, you know.
That's kind of what's happened.
It's been for years. My, your, uh, people, this, what kind of people squeeze it out. Talked about a lot of things here, but I don't know, or, I don't know if I, I don't know if I understand what was getting out of this. And how much we're going to give for what we have to pay. West Haven almost has, well, forty percent of all the dollars. And this is why, um, what do they need to know why?
I don't know, he just sent it to me and asked me if I would get it approved through the city council. I, I could go back to the, I don't, I don't remember a specific time. He might have said that in his email. I, I just told him I would bring it up to city council. And I don't know if it was on West Haven's agenda last night, if they voted on it or not, I, I don't know that. But I'm certainly sure we could wait until our next city council meeting if we want to hear more or find out, find out more. I, I don't know. What about the other part with the meals? Are we okay with the eleven dollars, you know, that budget for our seniors? So that would be the hundred and sixty-five dollars a month or nineteen eighty a year for our seniors to provide that one meal once a month. We, we already, I think, at one time approved that, but we didn't have an exact amount, so. So don't have two options, two options.
And Roy, Roy's every day though, I think.
Roy's every day, they have food every day, and they have an activity every day. And some of, well, clearly some of our residents do. Ryan and I joked, we need to stand at the door and say, if you're from Hoover, you can't come in. No, that's a joke. We love our, we love our seniors, I'm one of them. We love our seniors. But we were surprised, weren't we, when I, when they gave us these numbers?
Yes.
Because we both questioned that and said, we don't have anybody from Hoover coming, and then they pulled up this chart and said, yes, you do.
They capable, I think.
I guess they have, they're signing in.
So I'm okay with the second part of this, you know, the one we all, I mean, we talked about that already, so I'm okay. I don't know if we need to, if we need to budget or is that just kind of twizzing?
You know, we did talk about two thousand a week, how many members specifically, talking about that in the first session or something.
And, and I don't know, that's something we certainly ask Kami. I don't know if we have something even in our general expense. I don't know where we get that money from, but that's certainly a Kami question. And, and we don't need to decide on that either tonight, because like I say, we already have this twelve hundred and fifty that's paying for the meals now. And we only started the first of October, September, I think. Yeah, so we certainly haven't gone through that money yet that we have donated. And we, and, you know, they certainly said they could go out and try to get more donations.
So we're only, um, the first and third Wednesdays do only once a month.
No, they're still being the first and third, but people are donating it for one of the weeks, and we're just donating one of the weeks. And we're only donating eleven dollars of it because then they, people are paying it four dollars. Four, four dollars. So, so Chris and Blair went around to community members and had donations, or a couple of businesses that have already donated twelve hundred and fifty dollars. Just, no, because, because that much, with that, what the seniors pay, and if we do the nineteen eighty, that's covered for the entire year.
So what's up with us here in New York?
Yeah, probably we would, the next year, July's budget, and, and we probably really, it's like we said, we just started in July, so we probably are okay for a little bit, but but it would be good, and that's what, you know, you brought up Debbie about giving the budget number so we could approve it up.
So maybe we oughta just wait till next time and check with Kami on the money and see the best place to put the money.
Then we can find out more information, and in the meantime, I could let Rob know we tabled it, if that's the motion you want to make until next meeting. And then we can find out if Roy, because he said he doesn't know if his city council is going to approve four more thousand either, where they're already doing eighty.
I'd like to know if Weaver just decided on those two centers also, is that, so they decided to, they were in it, Roy basically, is, is that what?
That's what we're thinking, though, that would be a good question to have answered as well.
Right.
Okay, so is there a motion then? I'll make a motion that we table the discussion on the, the discussion on the senior lunches until our next meeting.
All second.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Maragoni, seconded by Councilmember Hale. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, that is the last thing on our agenda other than public comments. Are there any public comments tonight? Seeing no public comments, is there someone that would like to make an emotion to adjourn?
I'll motion for adjourn.
Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Bowers. Is there a second? Motion second was made by Councilmember Maragoni. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion was adjourned.